January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is John Samia here. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau?
Aye, here.
Beth Cassavan?
Present.
Ma- Morris DiPaolo?
Present.
Teresa Flynn?
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar?
Present.
Kristen Los?
Present.
Bernie Cahill?
Present.
Taylor Galucia?
Present.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Senate Bill twenty-four seventy-five, signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen. This meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as the reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet, is posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please be sure to step s- please be sure to press star six to mute your device. This meeting will not feature public comment. Finally, each vote taken in the mi- this meeting, we concluded by roll call vote. Colleagues, the first item on the agenda is to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A six, for the purposes listed on the agenda.
Second.
I've been moving to second, and roll call vote is required. John LeBeau?
Aye.
Beth Cassavan?
Aye.
Morris DiPaolo?
Aye.
Teresa Flynn?
Aye.
John Samia?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The board will now convene into executive session pursuant to, pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property. The board will reconvene back into open session.
You know, that generic slide. Here we are. Back?
Yep. Looks like it.
Okay. Great. Could hear us. Okay, so we're, we are back in open session. Welcome back. Next item on the agenda is on the preliminaries to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
I've been moving to second, and roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve minutes of January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, and January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
John, I don't think we're on. I can see you talking, and you're not talking right now.
I think there's a delay mode.
Oh. Sorry.
No problem. Is there a second?
Forgot it's like the Tonight Show. Second.
I've been moving to second, and roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia, aye, motion passes unanimously. I have nothing under announcements or reports. I will have some comments later, um, though, when, when we get to the item on Beal. So next item is town manager's report, Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members. Uh, I don't have anything specific. Uh, we're gonna go through some financial slides. At the meeting. Excuse me. Let me just get this up.
COVID nineteen.
Sorry. Shouldn't want to do this. All right. I'm sorry about that. Um, so I'll just go through the COVID nineteen update to start with. We've had three hundred and fifty-nine additional cases in the, in the last seven days and nine hundred and eighty, uh, nine hundred and forty-eight, uh, since last reported, uh, at your last meeting on January eleventh. I am pleased to update the board that we have seen a daily average decline, uh, since, um, the last board meeting. Uh, you can see that, obviously, the, um, two-week trend, the seven-day trend is much less than the two-week trend, almost a third less. So that is being, obviously, reflected in the daily case counts. Um, the vast majority of them over the last few days have been down in, um, twenty to thirty per day range, which is much better than our high, uh, over two hundred cases in a single day, um, just a couple of weeks ago. So happy to see those coming through in the daily case counts. I'm also happy to not have to report that there are any other, uh, any additional deaths. Um, you can still see, uh, through the chart that, uh, although the curve appears to still be climbing, um, it's being more influenced by the cases from earlier this month than, uh, the cases over the last few days, which you can see are again seventeen, twenty-six, thirty-six, or better than two oh-three, one seventy-two. So we're, we're definitely headed in the right direction. I'll keep the board updated, uh, with regards to that. This is another way to look at it. Uh, shows the weekly to, uh, case count, two-week positivity rate, and the average daily rate per hundred thousand, um, at minimum. You can obviously see a plateau here. Uh, we're not climbing anymore, so, uh, that's a good thing. And this is, uh, through the end of, uh, January fifteenth. So, uh, we'll update that in our weekly report this week. Continue to see, uh, significant increases in, um, the number of individuals getting a first dose, a booster dose, and being fully vaccinated, uh, being fully vaccinated. In this slide, it's still just the, uh, a single dose of J and J, or, uh, the two doses of the other two providers. Uh, and everyone basically, uh, is eligible, and, uh, those over the age of fifteen are eligible for boosters. Uh, excuse me, over the age of twelve. Here's a demographic chart and summary that we provide, both with the case count and the vaccination information. So if there's, um, any other questions with regards to COVID nineteen, I would be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? Not seeing any. Move to the next item. Mr. Mizikar, under financial business overview, departmental budget request.
Great, thank you. So, board members, as you all know, uh, departments were required to submit their budgets by, uh, the morning of January third. And over the last few weeks, we've been working diligently to, uh, meet with them all and review their budget requests, ask questions, and begin to align, uh, the departmental budgets with the Board of Selectmen's established goals. And understand departmental goals for fiscal year twenty-three, so we can align the budget priorities and, or the, the budget with the priorities of, uh, both the board and the departments. Couple initial things that I wanted to talk to the board this evening about. Definitely seeing a significant impact from inflation on, um, the mind of department heads and being reflected in several aspects of the budget. Um, I think one of the single largest line items that I'm seeing that reflected in is our, um, fuel, uh, that we use for our motor vehicle fleet. We, um, are anticipating a seventeen, uh, need to increase that budget line item by seventeen percent. Uh, this increase comes as our fleet becomes more fuel efficient, as many of our, uh, police cruisers, um, are hybrid, and we continue to rotate, uh, the old non-hybrid fleet out. So as we, despite the fact that we're projecting we'll use less fuel, um, because of the increase in the price per gallon, uh, that seventeen percent equates to about seventy thousand dollars, uh, impact on the budget. We're also seeing that as departments, uh, understand what service contracts and agreements that they have coming up for fiscal year twenty-three. And they are holding, uh, larger margins before we go out to bid, um, in anticipation of the general upward pressure in prices. Preliminary budget requests exceeded the, the framework spending cap by almost a million dollars. So, um, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Uh, it shows departments' eagerness to right-size, uh, their operations to provide, uh, continued services to residents. It reflects the growing, um, population in town and the demand for improved services. And, um, as we've talked about, we're still trying to right-size and catch up where we're behind in some staffing levels in several departments. We do plan to continue to both provide more transparency and, uh, more appropriately structure our organization, and that has resulted in the implementation of several new departments being proposed. In fiscal projection one, uh, it's a standalone human resources department, a standalone fleet maintenance division within the Department of Public Works, and separating out parks maintenance costs, which will cover, uh, the costs associated with maintaining all public grounds, uh, away from, uh, parks and recreation. And that budget will be used for the programs of services and activities, uh, from a recreation standpoint. So we're trying to, um, I think more fully highlight and spotlight recreation programs and activities, um, and moving the associated cost of maintaining those, which, uh, are a benefit to the public, but don't necessarily reflect services to the public, um, into two separate, uh, departments or divisions within, uh, the town. So when we look at a comparison from fiscal year twenty-one on the far right-hand side, uh, to the fiscal year twenty-two budget, you can note the, the larger increase. It's reflective of both debt service increases and, uh, the benefit of, of the Shrewsbury taxpayers supporting the board's initiative for an operational override. Um, and then there's a more modest increase in the FY twenty-three department requests. Again, um, on the municipal line item here, it exceeds, um, the amount that we will ultimately bring back in fiscal projection one. Uh, and the education line item right here is just a placeholder, um, so we can get to some bottom lines for comparative, uh, and discussion purposes moving forward with the board. So break that out into the functional areas that we've traditionally used and compare them to the final budget as updated at the October special town meeting. It's a modest year-over-year increase of, uh, one point nine percent, uh, thus far through the budget process. Um, you can see we're getting significant benefit, which will be directly passed on to the taxpayers, a reduction of, uh, over, or almost twenty-two percent within debt service. Uh, the largest change in debt service this year, which, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about, um, is paying off the, the high school. Well, I wanna get into some details on that. And also, we continue to benefit from the diligence and, um, foresight that the board had, uh, over the course of the last decade in fully funding our pension obligations and the retirement line item. And over the upcoming years, uh, we'll continue to, uh, maintain this much lower level, uh, of funding and, uh, shift funds between two line items for other post-employment benefits or OPEB and the pension system itself. There is going to be a little bit of challenge in explaining some year-over-year numbers, um, because of those shifts that we're making, especially between parks maintenance and parks and recreation. Uh, parks maintenance is a function of the Department of Public Works and are, is reflected in that category. And, um, recreation is a function of human services. So there's just some shifting of, of funding allocation, and we'll do our best to tease that out as we work through the budget process. Outside of that category, uh, public safety continues to be our, our largest spending category, as we, uh, grow to meet the service and pop, uh, demands of a growing population, um, and the police and fire departments. So talk a little bit about the debt service schedule. There is significant decrease from fiscal year twenty-two, and you'll see the continued decline over the next, uh, ten years that are shown on the screen. Uh, over, uh, between fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-six, there's another, uh, million-dollar decrease from, uh, what we are proposing in fiscal year twenty-three. That's a function of the debt service schedule that we always use, which is level principal and declining debt service over time. There is a significant drop from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three that's notable within the first, uh, area of the chart. Um, unfortunately, um, that's not fully reflected in the tax rate because of the roughly two-point-nine million dollars in debt service that we've been paying annually for, uh, the high school. Two-point-six million of that has been coming in from, uh, uh, s- school building authority, the precursor to the MSBA. So it's good news. Bad news is that over time, the, the state has funded, uh, what they've committed to, but that, the full impact just will not be reflected. However, uh, there is a reduction in, uh, debt service obligations that will be reflected in the tax rate of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we compare FY twenty-three to FY twenty-two. So it's still notable. Um, just a quick, um, comparison of total, uh, non-general fund charges within our utilities. We have the four enterprise accounts for, uh, utilities. Solid waste being, uh, paid through a program, which is partially funded through the tax rate. Uh, the tax rate will be contributing less than fifty percent of the total, uh, budget for solid waste as we're, uh, as we look at these initial requests. Um, stormwater, sewer, and water, all the showing decreases year-over-year. As we talk about always at this point in the budget process, we haven't finalized the capital improvement aspects of these budgets at this point. Once we finalize, since it's a rate, you know, that we use the rates, once we finalize the total, operating needs for the department, we'll move into, uh, finalizing the total funds that will be requested from, for capital purposes, and also closing out any projects that we have finished and come in under budget and reallocating those for additional capital projects. So, um, that's really the, the end of the presentation. I just wanted to provide the board with a quick snapshot, uh, coming up at your, uh, meeting. Uh, first meeting in February, I will make a final preliminary recommendation for fiscal projection one, which is the initial budget that goes to the finance committee. It will be formally published a few days after your meeting on February eleventh, so three days after. And then, uh, we'll provide any, uh, updates to the board at each and every meeting thereafter, especially as we move our way, uh, further towards town meeting year the end of April and, uh, other things kind of, um, firm themselves up from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this point, and we look forward to continuing to work with you throughout the process.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments? I don't see any little hands up. Just have one quick question on fuel. Do we buy long-term contracts? We go on a need basis?
So we partner with the city of Worcester. Um, and they, we join with them on their fuel bid programs. We bid it out annually, um, each year, uh, for January first, and, uh, that's for diesel fuel and, uh, regular gasoline. So it's a, it's a fixed price for the entire year, and we join in with the city on that, which is obviously a benefit to us, 'cause they use a whole lot more fuel than us, so we get that economy of scale.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mrs. Cassavan.
Uh, you mentioned, uh, continuing on with fuel, that we are converting, uh, police fleet to hybrid. Are there any other areas where we're able to, uh, replace, in the vehicle replacement process, replace with a hybrid vehicle?
Yeah, so hybrid and electric is definitely on the radar for the fiscal year, uh, twenty-three budget. Uh, and any opportunity that we have to move straight to the full EV, we will do. Um, I can tell you in the per, uh, initial capital improvement plan, there are, uh, several police cruisers that are proposed for hybrids. And then, like, a custom work van that we're, uh, going to consider EV for, and a traditional work pickup truck that I think, um, we have the opportunity to go full EV, or at least hybrid. And we're going to explore and exploit those opportunities every chance that we get. Of course, the board has authorized the placement of electric vehicle charging stations at the town hall, and the police station building committee is installing, uh, EV charging stations on the public and, uh, police side of the police station. So, uh, we're going to rapidly move in that direction wherever we can.
Any other comments or questions? I don't see any. Okay, great. So thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Next item, so under meetings, hearings, number, agenda items number eight and nine, we'll take up at our lex, next meeting. So we'll go up under new business to review and act to reallocate town meeting members based on the twenty-twenty federal census re-presenting and to change precinct to polling location. Mr. Mizikar, will you be speaking on that, or can you speak on that? Or is Mrs. Thomas here?
I don't believe she's here.
Okay.
Um, so this is a familiar process to the board, as we actually just did it, I believe it was last year, uh, because we were up for our own internal cyclical review of town meetings and the reallocation based upon population in each precinct, which is identified through the annual census process. However, uh, with the FY, excuse me, with the calendar year twenty-twenty federal census data coming through, um, the state requires us to, uh, reallocate precinct lines, and after the reallocation of lines, we reallocate, um, voting members in each district to try to make them, um, properly representative of the population in each, each district. So the board voted several months ago to, uh, recommend, uh, redistricting, redistricting lines. The state is slowly, but as of today, has, um, continued to, uh, approve, um, what we've submitted to them. And, um, so we are looking to recast the numbers again to make sure that each district is appropriately represented in, represented by, an adequate number of town meeting members. So there's two hundred and forty town meeting members, and we've provided the recommendation, uh, by precinct to the board for your consideration, see me?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Can we pull up, excuse me, Ms. Jim, can, can we pull up? Um, the spreadsheet with, um,
Sure.
what we're calling, uh, it was, it was option two B, I think.
Yeah.
Which is gonna reflect the new numbers, so we could, we see it.
Okay, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. DiPaolo.
I'm having trouble bringing up on my own screen, but, um, looking at this, um, we, we have, it looks like we have one precinct that has twenty-five and one that has, oh, there it is. Good. Okay. Two that are twenty-three, so there's gonna be two that are twenty-five. Okay. Good. Thanks, I couldn't see it clearly. That's why I had to pull up my sheet.
Okay, are we good? Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions? If not?
Mr. Chairman, I, let me, if I can just say, um, based upon what Mr. DiPaolo just said, just to kind of affirm that. So these numbers, uh, are much, uh, because of the re-presenting, and I guess our more in-depth knowledge of the population, because we have that data now. So these mu- numbers, the number of, uh, town meeting members per, uh, precinct is much closer in every precinct than it was, even with our formal reallocation. We don't have some with, you know, twenty-one or, or twenty members and some with twenty-eight. So this is, this is a really good and well-done job in drawing the lines and reallocating the number and, and having only a deviation of two from the smallest precinct to the largest.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassavan, did you have a question?
Well, I just thought it was worth reminding anyone who might be watching at home that the reason why we had to do this was because of the, the census. Uh, and if people recall, uh, we were out of balance, um, that, I think it was the twenty, maybe twenty-twenty-one, when we lost four seats in precinct nine. Um, and now this balances it out, so that there's a pretty close number of town meeting members from each precinct. Um, if I'm correct in my recall, um, only precinct three didn't change in this model, so that all town meeting members who are current town meeting members will need to run again, with the exception of precinct three. And then the top third, um, vote-getters would get a three-year term. The middle third would get a two-year term, and the bottom third would get a one-year term. Is that accurate for anyone who might be watching?
Yep. It, yes, that, that's the way it works.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's only precinct three. I don't remember. Um, but at, at least seven or eight of them for sure changed.
Yeah, I thought I remembered it only being precinct three that wasn't going to have to run again.
It could, it could have been. Um, and, and you could see on, just briefly, on precinct nine that had dropped down precipitously. It's back up even with the other ones. You remember they lost four or five when we had a redistrict a year ago, uh, reallocate?
Right.
Precinct nine's got more even representation now. That was one big benefit of, of the census.
And a follow-up, if I could, Mr. Samia?
Please, go ahead, Mrs.
Um, so does this mean, once we approve this, this evening, that the town clerk can prepare papers for those who are interested in running for a town meeting? Or any other town office?
This definitely moves us one step closer. We, um, I received an email late this afternoon that we may have gotten full approval of everything that we needed from the state, but I just don't wanna commit to that as of tomorrow. The state is still working through its, uh, process with every town, and we need to wait for them to finalize everything. But we'll be sure to post that far and wide once, uh, individuals are able to pull papers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I believe the motion would be to adopt, uh, the, adopt the precinct allotment as demonstrated on the document, new precinct, new precinct proposal version two B, and the column step two, number of town meeting members.
Second.
I've been moving to second, and roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item. Under new business is to review and act to authorize the town manager to negotiate a land disposition agreement with Civic Greenlee. Seven Maple Avenue, the former Beal School. Mrs. Los, our assistant town manager, if you'd like to make a presentation.
Sure, thank you, Chairman Samia. I'd also like to acknowledge that Director of Planning and Economic Development, Bernard Cahill, is on the line, um, if you have any questions for him. But I will bring the board through a short slide deck and then turn it back over to Mr. Samia related to your discussion this evening. So, next slide, please. So just in summary of the presentation that I'll be giving this evening, we wanted to remind the board and the public of the pre-planning that the town has gone through related to the Beal School and the town center. We want to, uh, give a brief summary of the development of the Beal request or proposal for the land disposition. We want to review the proposal that was received from Civic Greenlee. We, most importantly, would like to review the themes that we heard from the public from the December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one public hearing in which the Board of Selectmen and Civic Greenlee presented on, and we heard from the public and then received many comments via email and phone calls after. We'd then like to review the project requirements and then the steps to move forward. So I will go through this, um, briefly. I won't read everything on the slide. I'm sure we'll be able to post this on our website tomorrow for anyone who'd like to take a closer look. Uh, but as the board members recall, and some members of the public may recall, that the Board of Selectmen created the Beal Reuse Committee in November of two thousand and seventeen, when it was determined that the Beal Early Childhood Center at One Maple Avenue would no longer be used for an elementary school at the town of Shrewsbury. Then, after that, uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, and the Beal Reuse Committee held a public hearing to provide for inputs and thoughts of the public, uh, and that was in March of two thousand and eighteen. Then, the town of Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen, in concert with the Planning and Economic Development Department, uh, with, uh, in consultation with Horsley Witten Group and Mass Development, uh, went through a series of town surveys, public forums, and other, uh, outlets. to create a town center study with a focus on the Beal School. There's actually an entire chapter that focuses on the Beal School, the desires of the townspeople at that time. And the outcome also established a framework for a request for proposal that could be prepared if the town so wished to dispose of the property. The study also took a look at some zoning requirements that we'd like to upgrade if we were to move forward with this process. Throughout May of twenty nineteen to August of twenty twenty, Mr. Cahill and his team led a preparation for the Town Center rezoning project. There was a series of public forums that were extremely well-attended back in November and December of twenty nineteen at the library. An additional feedback was received. And then at the August eighth, twenty twenty town meeting, the town meeting did adopt that Town Center District zoning bylaw to maintain and enhance the character of Shrewsbury's historic town center and promoting appropriate development and redevelopment. After that proposal was adopted by town meeting for the zoning bylaw, the town of Shrewsbury through the Board of Selectmen and the Planning and Economic Development Department requested a grant from Mass Development to prepare that request for proposal that was recommended in the two thousand eighteen study. The Board of Selectmen then charged the Beal Reuse Committee to oversee that request for proposal preparation. And they did so throughout February of twenty twenty through September of twenty twenty when the RFP was issued. And there's just some elements in writing below there that are related to what the town was looking for in that request for proposal that developers would respond to. Just like to remind the board and the public that the bids were due in January twenty twenty one. One bid was received from Civic Greenlee. The Beal Reuse Committee in concert with the consultant that we were using reviewed that RFP and prepared, prepared, prepared a very concise and comprehensive memo to the Board of Selectmen in which you received in March of twenty twenty one. Then the board's actions since March of twenty twenty one had been to receive that report to discuss the recommendations made. You did that in May of twenty twenty one. You discussed the project at a roundtable discussion in June of twenty twenty one. There were some initial discussions with Civic Greenlee between June and November of twenty twenty one. And then that ultimately led the board to hold a public hearing in December of twenty twenty one. And at this time, I'll turn the presentation back over to Mr. Samia.
Thank you, Mrs. Los. So I had the December seventh, twenty twenty one public hearing together with the, actually a lot of the communication we received by email, regularly US mail as well. We had the following themes that, that were prevalent, a reduction in number of overall housing units, more open space and to maximize public parking to support the town center businesses. Next slide, please. So I can turn it back to you, Mrs. Los here as well, but what's here and what we met during executive session was to go over next steps and parameters for negotiation. As we had mentioned earlier, the agenda item itself is to review and act to authorize the town manager to negotiate an LDA. And these are parameters that we would want the town manager to look at in light of the factors that we just talked about. As you would proceed with negotiations, should the board agree to move forward, as we can see, there's still a lot of work to do. Not only are these in terms of increasing open space, we're generally comfortable with the retail space, looking to increase public parking. We'll preserve the memorial. Residential housing is twelve point five percent and decrease the number of apartments. We heard that resoundingly. And I can assure you, everybody that was there, we appreciate your comments and we heard you. And this is what would look, based on the conversation we had during that executive session to authorize Mr. Mizikar to proceed with. Mrs. Los, any further thoughts on that slide?
No, Mr. Samia, I think you summarized that well. Like I said before at the beginning of my presentation, Mr. Cahill is here. If any board members would like to hear how we believe that this proposal would fit into the overall context of the redevelopment of the town center and the vision that has been developed over the course of the past five to six years.
Yeah, please, Mr. Cahill, I would like that. You as well have played an integral role in this project you brought forward, the zoning, rezoning back at the August twenty twenty annual meeting. Did a lot of the public forums at the library and the like. If you could also, as Mrs. Lawson mentioned, provide some of your thoughts on this project. Having been integrally, integrally involved. Mr. Cahill has left the meeting. He'll be back hopefully momentarily. Mrs. Cassavan, you had a question while we wait for Mr. Cahill.
No, I was just going to say I would like Mr. Cahill to provide that, please. I think it's important for people who are watching at home also to have that context.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cahill. You are back.
That, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So actually, I mean, this effort goes back to actually the two thousand sixteen master plan where the master plan steering committee first created a task for the Planning Economic Development Department to look into making the town center district more pedestrian-friendly, more of a mixed-use and more of a neighborhood and not so much automobile-focused. So I think Miss Last hit most of the main points. As you said, we did have several public forums that dealt with this. And let me think. Do you have any specific questions in mind? I mean, what this proposal does is it really creates, excuse me, sorry, I was already. It really creates the neighborhood feel and look that we are, we're going for in the town center zoning. And I think this is the right way to go with the parameters for negotiation. I think we heard the public loud and clear, and I think this is heading in the right direction.
Thank you. And the important piece too, and you've talked a lot about in both, both you, Mrs. Los as well and Mr. Mizikar, just the vibrancy. The opportunity that this could serve as a catalyst for future investment, potentially downtown revitalization. And, and that's the importance as well. And it also could create that type of demand, a mixed-use project, that type of demand that would also really create that vibrancy and, and that downtown feel as well. And it was a rendering that was presented at December seventh, just to show what that is with sort of the outside patio and people eating outside and the monument there. And it's, it's, it's similar to what we saw even with the Yuletide market, that excitement and buzz. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. Board members and seeing the parameters with regard to increased public parking, it also reminds me of the work that we've done. We conducted a parking study and deep analysis and found that, you know, perception is actually a larger problem than reality with total parking spaces in the town center. And part of that town center rezoning initiative allowed for shared public parking spaces among property owners and businesses. And that's something that we look to fully utilize and gain as the town centers revitalize and develop. It's very effective in sharing spaces where some businesses see a higher daytime population and others may see a higher weekend and evening population. And we don't have to have as much impervious surface where every unique individual parcel has its own parking, but we can share that amongst other things. So this is certainly an opportunity that we will exploit the best that we can for this project to increase the number of parking spaces for the town center, but certainly this won't solve it. But we'll do everything that we can to have this project provide more than its fair share to help to be that pressure relief valve.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Yeah, I think too, I'd go off of Mr. Mizikar's comments to say that patterns and work have also been changing about people working from home, especially during COVID, and I think we're seeing that across the board. As we see businesses actually moving out of their brick and mortar buildings and allowing for more flexible working, which means more people are not commuting and are actually using their apartments or homes, single-family homes, whatever, what have you, as their offices, which reduces the traffic flow. I think too, Mr. Chairman, when you mentioned vibrancy, I mean, we need, when we say vibrancy is kind of a catch-all for a lot of things, but of course, we mean, we mean foot traffic downtown and what I call constant customers, people who are going to visit these stores and our shops downtown every day, right? They'll be their go-to stores. Their go-to restaurants where they hang out, where they meet their friends. And that's what's important here, whatever eventually gets negotiated. But I think that mixed-use element is what we've been going for the whole time.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have a few comments before I open it up to the board. Kevin, Kristen or Bernie, any additional comments? Okay. So just, I jotted down a few things. We received a lot of comments also today. Again, I appreciate the time that people have taken, whether it's December seventh or the emails, we've read each and every email. We've read them into correspondence. We'll have a few more later today and as I'll say momentarily, but I'll reiterate, we have heard you. Just would like to make some brief introductory remarks to the community before opening up to the board for comments. Like you, we all live here. We love our community and every action that we take is in furtherance of making sure that Shrewsbury is a great place for all to live, work and raise a family. We are entrusted to act in the best interest of our community. We do not take this responsibility lightly. And I can assure you that, that everyone on this board continues to take a rigorous review of the prospective project, does their own due diligence and continues to ask hard questions every step of the way. We strive to be open, available and transparent. As for openness and transparency, as public officials, we are bound by the open meeting law. There are no side deals to be had. All of our meetings are required to be posted in advance and with limited exceptions are available to be watched live like now or at your convenience at any time in the Shrewsbury Media Connection Archive. Our meeting minutes are also available. One limited exception to the open meeting, there are a few, but one that is the requirement to allow the board to leave open session as we did earlier into executive session because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect in the negotiating position of the board. Imagine buying a business, house or car and disclosing all of your negotiation strategy to the other side before you meet in a, before you've even made an offer. One wouldn't do very well. So alternatively, this limited exception enables effective strategy in what we believe to be much better terms for our community. In any endeavor with pursue and to be clear, minutes of any executive sessions have to be taken and these minutes will be released to the public for its review and no longer needed to be kept as a private record. In addition, any final agreements, including any final NDA and related terms would need also to be approved in open session. In addition to our meetings, we have discussed this project during our selectman roundtable shows and colleagues have discussed this project recently on Ask the Manager SMC Show. This project started through the RFP and establishment of the RFP Committee back in November of twenty seventeen. But as Mr. Cahill said, the real genesis of this goes back before that to twenty sixteen. Multiple public forums and hearings have been held. Surveys have been taken and a large portion of the twenty twenty annual town meeting was spent in rezoning adoption to promote the town center as a pedestrian-friendly shopping and service area and a neighborhood gathering place with a vision of a mixed-use project like the one that we have been working on. But I know that we can always do better with our communication and we will always strive to do so. For all of those residents who attended the public hearing on December seventh or have taken the time to communicate with the board, we thank you. I can assure you that we have heard you as evidenced by we, this talking earlier about parameters and we had talked earlier in the executive session about. We are always available to answer any questions that you have. Our contact information is available online. And we encourage you to please reach out if you have done so. Let's talk by phone over Zoom or socially-distanced cup of coffee. We are here for you. While I believe that this is a project that Shrewsbury residents would, could be proud for generations to come and it could serve as a catalyst for downtown revitalization. There's still quite a bit of work to do as evidenced by today and parameters and discussions to have. I ask that as we continue through this process, we continue to keep our dialogue respectful. And remember that the board, as I mentioned earlier, our goal is always to act in the best interest of the community. So there are just a few thoughts that I have with that. I'll open up to the board for any questions or comments on this agenda item. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DePaul.
If I could just add, and I agree with everything you said. I think some people think because we don't react immediately to what they say that we're not listening. We do listen, but sometimes there are things that we agree with and sometimes there are things that we don't. So, and that's just like a normal part of life. But some people seem to think this came out of nowhere. And I think it's just important to note and go back and reinforce this last presentation that, you know, having been the chair of the reuse committee, this goes back to nineteen eighteen and just that committee alone met eighteen times and had a couple of public hearings. And in between that, consultants and staff worked on, you know, some of the, some of the information that we, we needed, gathered the information, helped put the programs together. So it was a long process. And just in the past year or so, there have been over eleven articles in the local papers. We've been on, this thing has been on Facebook, on the town website. So, and it's been on, the webpage has tons of information on it. So it, it wasn't something that, that came up quickly and, and was tried to be pushed through. Regardless of whether people agree with whatever the ultimate project is that the board approves. There was a lot of effort that went into it. There has been a lot of effort. There continues to be a lot of effort. And I think to reiterate what you say, you know, we do live in the community also and we're really trying to do what we think is in the best long-term interest in the town and focusing on the vibrancy of the center. So, you know, hopefully people will be patient with us as we work through this and come up with a final decision one way or the other. But certainly there were a lot of public meetings and, and the community advocate actually gave some good coverage to this. So I, I just wanted to say we're trying really hard to do this correctly and to do whatever the right thing is, and that's subjective to who's looking at what the right thing is. But I think we're all trying to do the same thing for the town. Might just be differences of opinion on what that means.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Flynn.
I, I won't repeat what I heard. I, I agree with a lot of what you said, Mr. Samia and some, some key points that you made, Mr. DePaul. You know, being sort of the newest member of this board, a lot of what I came into this position wanting to do was increase our ability to have the community be informed and engaged. And I think we all recognize that. Even as Mr. DePaul outlines, it's all out there. It's been a long process. We've really tried to engage the community. We've tried to make this very transparent. There's still a lot that we can do there. And I just want to reassure people who might be tuning in tonight that I echo your comments that we really do take the feedback seriously. We're trying to make improvements. Our number one objective is to serve the community well. So, and part of that is continuing to look at ways that we can disseminate information in a way that people feel like they can be as informed as they choose to be.
Thank you. And transparency is key and that's what we always work on. Mrs. Cassavan.
So I just wanted to thank you for your comments. I actually spend a fair amount of time on Facebook. I hesitated to jump into today's Facebook discussions or any Facebook discussions around this topic because I know that we're still in a position of negotiations and the last thing I want to do is say something and I need to be mindful of, you know, the executive session and open meeting law. And I think that it's important for the community to understand the way that correspondence is handled and the ways that we are constrained by open meeting law. So when someone sends an email to the Board of Selectmen, it's customary for the chair to respond. And that typically happens after the email is, is read as correspondence and noted in an open meeting. You know, they would get back an email from Taylor that would say, yes, we received your email. But there is a process. And so sometimes I think that because there's a delay, it can be misconstrued as no one's hearing me. Today, for the first time, we received some group texts with people's feedback around this project. Today, for the first time, we received some group texts with people's feedback around this project. And my concern is those group texts are going to go unanswered and that's because of open meeting law. I can't answer that group text because the Board of Selectmen can't have a conversation in a group text without violating open meeting law. And that's to protect the transparency to the public. So that when we are having conversations and we are deliberating, that that is something that is. Open public for everyone to be able to see, listen to and understand. To me, that the most difficult part of reading through the Facebook post today. Is the thought that perhaps the people who sit in these seats. And are elected to represent the community in which we live are somehow. Not maintaining a high degree of integrity. And I, and I know for myself that. I just want to make sure that the viewing public and the residents of Shrewsbury realize the reasons that we sit here are altruistic. That we have the best interests of the community at heart, that we are a local government, we are local leaders. And because of that, we are invested in this community in ways that. Everybody else who lives here is invested and we welcome those opportunities to speak with people and have conversations. My phone rang many times today. I picked it up without knowing who was going to be on the other end. I had many really good conversations today. I think that when we sit down and speak to one another, there's always an opportunity to find middle ground. And I just want to make sure that people still feel comfortable reaching out and speaking to us, especially, you know, I speak for myself. I welcome those opportunities and nothing here is a done deal. It's a continuous work in progress. We aren't selling this property tonight. We're simply asking or deciding whether or not to ask the manager. To continue on with our negotiations. I know that I'm being long-winded. But what I heard from people is they'd like to see it smaller project. We'd like to see more open space. And I'm not ready to walk away yet until I know whether or not those are parameters around which we can agree with Civico. And, and hopefully that's what the community wants to see. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau.
Well, um, we all, we all say we're not going to speak too long and I'm going to try not to speak so long. We've. I agree with everything my colleagues have said this evening. I want to key on a couple of points and it is going to be a little bit repetitive, but as Selectman DiPaolo mentioned. What we saw in the presentation tonight, I hope reminds people and gives people some comfort. That this has been a longstanding. Public process extremely incremental. Many, many steps along the way. But and many, many opportunities for public input and very grateful that there was a great deal of public input. In those forums and in those sessions, which led us and led the, not the board, led the committee. To work on developing an RFP. Had the town meeting participate by virtue of voting the zone changes. So, I mean, this didn't happen in a vacuum. It didn't happen in secrecy. It happened out there as Chairman. Samia mentioned, the board did protect its rights and the rights of the community by using. The executive session privilege allowed when discussing the value of real property. So I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the process that took us to where we got. And I appreciate the fact that some folks have reached out to us in the last few days. And I understand some folks may have just learned about this project, but as I mentioned, I mean, it's been. There's been so many public opportunities and notices about this that I'm, I'm sad you didn't know about it sooner. We're taking the information that we received today and in recent time. And, and trying to consider that and integrate that because truthfully, there's been. I'd say a, a bit of a difference in the communication that we're receiving recently than we received. Over those several years frankly, but we respect that. We. I do think the public hearing in December was very, very informative and I appreciate the folks who came out to that, but. It's just, it's difficult. I mean, it's truthfully difficult. Some of us, you know, we do, some of us have jobs and we all have. Families and lives to be getting emails, you know, including in this meeting, I'm trying to pay attention to, to my meeting. So there is some value in, in getting communication to us a li- a little more quickly. Then, you know, last night is honestly, I'm in bed and people want to talk to me about it and I wanted to go to sleep. And I tried to get back in touch with them this morning. So I've, I've violated what I started off with. If I've gone lost, I will end there. I agree with what the board is proposing to do this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I have one final comment and then we'll see where the board wants to go.
Mister Chairman. I'm sorry for jumping up and down and, and I'm gonna have to run outside for a minute because my. Dog is having a problem and afraid to come up the stairs. So. I got the speaker on loud enough. I'll hear it out in the backyard, but I'm, I'm sorry. I just, there's nothing I can do about it right now.
No worries. Dusty, we need to take care of Dusty. Just a final thought. We know that truth and trust and leadership is tough, particularly at the national level. But I can assure you, having been in business now for almost 30 years, many of those years. In corporate ethics, I have not seen a more ethical process and. Every individual in this process of the utmost integrity. So. As Mrs. Cassavan said earlier, integrity is important to us, the process, the integrity of the process is important, the openness, the transparency. We're always striving to do better, but we're locals and please also. Know that locally you have a lot of impact in terms of communicating with us and as we've done so far, ready, willing. And very receptive to having those conversations. Conversations go a long way, having mutual dialogue going back and forth. And we're ready for you. So that's just what I wanted to say that. I know nationally is a little tough, but locally we're here for you and ready to answer any questions that you have. If there are any other comments, if not, I'm not seeing any other hands. And entertain, is there a motion or desire to put this agenda item?
Mister Chairman. Well, before I make the motion, I, I want to make sure I have a motion in good form. Might a motion be something reflective of the board authorizing the town manager? And team to. Negotiate the parameters of an LDA based on. The, the column parameters for negotiation that we've laid out in, in slide 10.
Yes, into an LDA though, right? So you're going to negotiate those parameters within an LDA. So we'll have that authority to move forward with an LDA consistent with those parameters. Right?
That's exactly the motion I'm making, Mister Chairman.
Excellent motion.
And I will second.
Have been moving in second in a roll call vote is required, Mister LeBeau. Mrs. Castaban.
Aye.
Mister DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mister Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Los, Mister Cahill, Mister Mizikar for your presentation this evening. All the hard work that you've done. And again, thank you, everyone from the public who we have heard from to date. And as mentioned. We look forward to hearing from you as this process moves forward. Mister Mizikar.
Mister Chairman, if, if you've made your way through item 11 on the agenda, I believe we need to go back to item 10. There's a very important second part to that item beyond the reallocation of town meetings, which includes designating. The change of polling location for precinct two. It may have been included in the motion, but I don't think sufficient. Debate or conversation about it had occurred. So I just, I think it's very important we handle that.
Oi, yes, please. So the existing, well, we know that, so the second part, we weren't clear on. So as part of the memo in the file. The old selectmen's room is no longer available to be the polling location for precinct two. So Mister Mizikar would need a, a, a motion, a clear motion to change the polling to. Polling station to the senior center. Is that, would that be sufficient?
That is correct. Shrewsbury Senior Center.
Second.
And moving to second, a roll call vote is required, Mister LeBeau. Mrs. Castaban.
Aye.
Mister DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mister Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mister Mizikar for that poll location. I missed that. Next item under 12. Is to review and adopt fiscal year 23 health insurance rates for active employees. If I could give that back to you, Mister Mizikar.
Absolutely. So board members, this is an abnormal year because of Fallon Health leaving the commercial. Market place in the Western Bourbon Health Group, which is a joint purchasing group of 13 municipalities. That come together to fully ensure health insurance and work with various networks. To provide low, as low cost as possible health insurance for all of our employees. Because of that change of Fallon, which for the town of Shrewsbury, over 80% of our employees currently subscribe to. We started the process much earlier this year and both the Western Bourbon Health Group Board. And the Insurance Advisor Committee of the Town of Shrewsbury are recommending rate changes that are included. In the board's packet this evening. In summary, those rate changes. Do a couple of things. From the prior information that the board has voted on, we've shifted the contribution strategy. Towards a new lower cost network, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we've now set the premium rates, which. When you compare the most comparable plans, they're in place either to their prior plans or to the Fallon. Plan is most comparable to the ones that are remaining on average. For the existing plans with, with no changes, that would be Tufts and Harvard Pilgrim. There's roughly a three and a half percent increase. And for the. Folks, it would be electing to go from the Fallon plans into the Blue Cross Blue Shield. There's a little over a 6% increase. Now, the Western Bourbon Health Group has worked diligently over the previous years to increase our fund balance. Having a, a secure financial position, we're able to utilize fund balance to minimize the cost impact on towns and subscribers this year. So with that and with the consideration of the Insurance Advisory Committee's. Recommendation of Ask the Board adopts these rates as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mister Mizikar. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Oh, Mister Mizikar. No. Got himself. Any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
A move we approve is recommended.
Second.
Have been moving in second in a roll call vote is required, Mister LeBeau. Mrs. Castaban.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mister Samia, I thank you, Mister Mizikar. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the reappointment of Brian Clark. Forty-five Grafton Street to the Shrewsbury Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire on February 10th, 2025. Your motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moving in second, a roll call vote, Mister LeBeau. Mrs. Castaban. Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mister Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Next item is to review and act on the reappointment of Julie Holstrom, 43 Westview Avenue to the Shrewsbury Development Corporation. For a five-year term to expire on January 31st, 2027.
Move, move approval.
Second.
And then moving to second, a roll call vote is required, Mister LeBeau.
Aye.
Mrs. Castaban.
Aye.
Mister DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mister Samia, I, it was weird talking about myself in the third person. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is under old business. This is process update on diversity, equity and inclusion task force report. So colleagues, we spoke about this in mid-December. We had a discussion where we were potentially engaging a consultant, so I wanted to provide some updates at that time. We had some quotes reaching out to. My professional network. It was a little slow rolling. What I learned after talking with other consultants, which I'll discuss shortly is that. The consultants were thoroughly booked up through 2021, realizing that two quotes would not be sufficient. We took a step back in December and expanded our search. So we reached through. Our human resources department and the town manager's office. I want to thank Christine Ordang who helped us. Reach out to similarly situated professionals, not the Commonwealth and her network, to find what other towns have done and recommended consultants. So with Taylor Volusia's help, we did a little process by which we sent out the task force and reached out to recommended, referred experts. Since we last spoke, so we expanded our search from two to nine firms. We spoke with an additional three firms over the last few weeks, had very productive conversations. We have two quotes. We will have a third quote by close of business Thursday. And what I will ask Miss Volusia to do is to include in the drive materials about each. Consultant in terms of who they are, what they do, services they provide. They will all have a proposal or cost information. And there'll also be notes about when we, when we spoke with them, just in terms of what, what their expertise is. All of these materials would be ripe for discussion in our workshop that's scheduled for early next month. I learned a lot in this process that I'm eager to share with the board during the workshop in terms of what recommendations are. And I really believe that there's a lot of experience here in helping us look through the. Recommendations by the task force, help us go through each one and, and evaluate in terms of potential implementation. Of the various recommendations. So I'm excited about it. I think we've learned a lot. Again, I want to thank Miss Volusia and. There's some good expertise out there in terms of timing. I just want to go back to that point that we didn't lose time on this. Given that. Every consultant said the same thing. They've been very busy. The consultants that we're looking at would be available in February, assuming that they meet. The expectations of the board, which we're talking about soon. So that is the update I wanted to provide and also. Let the community know that we're working hard. We know that the task force, force worked very hard on preparing that over the 12-month period. They met the deadline. And we're excited to get to that work. And I, one other comment that I've heard from every conversation that we've had. Is that as we go through our strategic planning process that we're going through now in earnest. That this is the right time as well to be looking at the recommendations and, and putting, basically weaving them together. I think we'll get the most meaningful results. So that is the update I wanted to provide, said we'd do it last month. And that's where we're at and I look forward to the conversations early next month as a board. Any questions or any further thoughts? Mrs. Castaban.
I just wanted to thank you for doing all of this legwork to try to find consultants for us. Thank you. Taylor and thank you to Mrs. Ordang for her efforts as well. I know that it certainly was quite a bit of work. Again, I just would like to reiterate that. I think that we need to be moving as expeditiously as possible in order to provide some sort of response. To the task force report. In my mind, I see a separation between. Implementing the recommendations that were put forth in the task force report. And one of the goals that I think this whole board is leaning towards, which is the formation of a permanent DEI committee. To act in an advisory capacity to the town. And so I think that those are two different. Things that we need to be working on at kind of at the same time. I look forward to an opportunity. To work through some of these in a workshop setting. I know that Selectman Flynn and I were working offline. On a document that would. Highlight some possible charge outlines for a DEI committee in the town. I appreciate her partnership on that and just being able to bounce ideas off one another and, and get. Something that we can react to in a workshop setting as we also are considering. A consultant. I know that I was pretty vocal in our last meeting about thinking that we would be able to. Come up with a charge for a DEI committee on our own and I'm still not 100% convinced that that's not something that we can do. So I did want to make sure that I was prepared for our workshop to be able to have something for everyone to react to. Just one other housekeeping kind of thing. And I, I know that I had spoken to you, Mister Samia, about the conflict of interest. That everyone who's on a board and committee has to do this conflict of interest. It's like a little test that you do online. that everyone who's on a board and committee has to do this conflict of interest. Uh, it's like a little test that you do online. It's put out by the state. It's not the most fun you could possibly um find for an hour of your time. So I'm almost wondering if we need to be also thinking about when we disband the task force. Not that we don't, you know, not that we don't want to keep them around, but we certainly don't want to um subject people to having to go through the conflict of interest work if they don't need to. And also uh we have a policy that prevents people from serving on more than one committee at a time. And we want to make sure that as opportunities present themselves to to participate in other forms of our government that they're free to do so and not um bound by still being a part of a task force whose work is complete. Just my thoughts there.
Okay, on the housekeeping piece, absolutely understand that. And we'll, we'll talk about that at our next workshop, which is very soon. Any other questions or comments? There's no action required, but anything else? Okay. Good. Well, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Cassavan, for your update as well. Look forward, we have a lot of good work to do on this, and um we expect this to be moving pretty quickly in early February. So good. So next, we'll go to correspondence. The uh next thing is an email dated January sixth, twenty twenty-two from Kevin Mizikar, town manager regarding the Conservation Commission. I wanted to I also recognize Bob Jakes, who served on the Shrewsbury Conservation Commission for over thirty years. That is the email from Mr. Mizikar and Mr. Jake, so just like to point that out as well, standing uh service to our community. So thank you very much for all of that. Next item on the agenda is email dated January seventh from Ed Stewart and Lewis Tree Service Contractor for National Grid regarding National Grid Vegetation Maintenance Notification Shrewsbury, so noted. Next item is a letter dated January tenth, twenty twenty-two from Mary Claire Rigby, Lead Vegetation Strategy Specialist at National Grid regarding the upcoming sideline vegetation management activities, so noted. Uh, next item is a letter received January tenth, twenty twenty-two from Andrew Truman, town engineer, regarding Honey Honey Suckle Lane speed complaints, so noted, and I will if I could, Mr. Mizikar, work with your office, and we'll shoot that off to the resident who asked for that a while ago to let him know that we did look into his uh concerns and that this the information that we received and that the level of speed seemed to be okay based on a report. So noted, next item is email dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Mannequin State Representative regarding stepping update. It looks like um she has a a new legal aide, Anna Darrow, who served as her legislative aide since fall of twenty nineteen, has left. It sounds like she's leaving the State House to pursue uh another opportunity that she will do well in, so we want to thank her. And also Sophia Felonas, uh twenty eighteen graduate of the Shrewsbury High School, will now be her uh legal intern, legal aide, excuse me. So that is so noted. Next item, email dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-two from Anna Darrow, Office of State Representative Anna Kane, regarding Seven Boston Turnpike in Mass, so noted. Next item, letter dated, letter received January fourteenth from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Local Election District's Review Commission regarding approval of redividing of Shrewsbury, so noted. Uh, next item, twenty-three email dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two from Carrie Bogden, Risk Analysis Branch Chief Mitigation Division in Region One Workmap Meeting Invitation to Town of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, in Blackstone Watershed, so moment, so noted. Um, twenty-four, letter received January eighteenth from Nick Repetta, Highway Division Manager. Uh, the snow report uh regarding the three inches of snow. I always mar- marvel at the reports um that we get regarding the snowstorm on January sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Mizikar, just a quick question. It appears, at least for this report, that the shortages in Plows was not a problem. I know that we had issues before finding help for this storm. It was okay?
Yeah, the the lesser accumulations, we can keep up. Um we've also switched to the, you know, brine pretreatment, which uses a lot less salt and is much more effective on the roadway surface. Um, but as we get into larger storms uh like the one that may be coming this weekend, we'll definitely be challenged and just ask for people to give us a few extra hours of patience uh to get their road uh cleaned up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Repetta's report is so noted. Next item, letter received January nineteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty-two from Bernard Cahill, Director of Planning and Economic Development, and Rome McAllister, Assistant Town Planner regarding Master Plan Implementation, twenty twenty-one update. Uh, just want to thank both of them. So really good report. Um, so noted, it's it's good to see the progress that has been made. Uh, and then the last three items, nicely is is field reuse correspondent, items twenty-six through twenty-eight letters. Um actually, I'll just read them out. Letter dated January tenth, twenty twenty-two from Karen Holovania of Nineteen Wesleyan Street regarding Beal School. Sale Concerns, letter twenty-seven, uh item on the court list of correspondents received during tenth, twenty twenty-two from Joan Hare, Six Blasts of Blackstone Street regarding field reuse. And then the final item on the agenda for under correspondence, letter received January twenty-first, twenty twenty-two from Paul Shepherd, sixty-two Wildwood Road regarding the Beal Reed, Beal School reuse and town center changes. So that is all we have on our agenda this evening. If there's nothing else that members would like to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And we're moving in second, and a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mr. De Paulo.
Aye.
For Samia, wait, Mrs. Flynn, I must get ahead of you. Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining this evening. We will see you at our next meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Night.
All right. Thank you, everybody.